I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so used to our, the clerks not here.
I can't.
That's what I'm looking. It's like, oh, she's not there.
Les Dinsburg.
Present.
Wilbert Fobbs. James Cussell.
Here.
Dennis Nordman.
Here.
Jason Hammond. Tim Hillman.
Here.
Mark Disick. We have four of them.
Can we get our motion to excuse the commissioners who are not here this evening?
I move.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Everyone has a copy of the agenda. Need a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
I move.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor? Everyone should have received a copy of the, every one of the commissioners should have received a copy of the agenda packet which included the minutes from the prior meeting.
That wasn't in my packet.
No?
I've gone through things 20 times. So I can't move to accept them.
Everyone else get a copy of the minutes? Everyone else had a chance to review the minutes?
Yes. I move.
There's a motion to, it's been moved in second to accept the, to approve the minutes from the prior meeting. All those in support?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes. We're going to open our meeting up to a public comment, preferably things that are related to the items on the agenda. If there's anyone that has a public comment preferably related to items on the agenda. Come forward now.
Is that a wide definition of items on the agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That way.
I've got some handouts. Three pages there?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it, thank you.
Oh, I may have given somebody out a letter. If I did, please give it back. Oh, no, it's right here. Well, for those of you who don't know, I'm Diane Anderson. I'm part of a group called the Friends of Annie Lethrop School on Facebook and soon to be on Instagram. So if you miss any of this stuff, you'll get to find it there. And to identify myself, I'm the daughter of the people who built the first house in Lethrop after the war. My ties go back to 1951. I have an extensive archive of Lethrop documents. I'm working on a history of Lethrop. And I am appalled at what is going on to my beautiful, beautiful hometown. So I want to talk tonight about why Lethrop is no longer considered a bedroom community. A bedroom community is defined as a small community that has no major industries and is lived in by people who go to another town or city to work. When Lethrop was founded, it was always to be a bedroom community where quiet enjoyment was what you had. Our businesses closed down at night. We had four office buildings, one of which you are now in business of trashing, one of our heritage buildings, that had professionals and still could be repurposed. We had all kinds of businesses that were appropriate to a neighborhood like this one. It was a place where you could be safe. You didn't have people coming into the four petrol stations within 1.5 miles. You didn't have restaurants where there was a murder committed when a late-night payroll was being taken out. And most importantly, you didn't have a Plessy v. Ferguson. You remember that 1896 separate but equal doctrine that created a two-tiered citizenry in America? White people best, everybody else second. And Lethrop seems to be emulating Plessy v. Ferguson. We have a two-tiered citizenry in Lethrop. If you live in the inner streets, Saratoga, my street of San Jose, San Quentin, San Diego, Bungalow where my parents built the first house in Lethrop, Cambridge where they built the second one, and so forth, you enjoy quiet amenity. But lately, if you live along Southfield Road, you are a second-class citizen. You have all kinds of inappropriate businesses there. They create noise, they create congestion, they denigrate your very property by their existence. They bring outside elements into the community. We recently even had another attempt to bring drugs into the community. And happily, it failed for the second time. Hopefully, that'll be the last. Now, I'm going, I'm not going to read out for all of you people, all these wonderful businesses that places like Berkeley have established. But suffice it to say, their specialty shops, their boutiques, and that's what should have been happening in Lethrop. But the Historical Society that my mother was a co-founder of and did so much work for and whose documents I have copies of has failed to live up to its guidelines, which was to basically get the school back, to preserve our historic buildings, and to make sure that Southfield Road architecture reflected the architecture of the neighborhood and that the buildings were neighborhood-appropriate. That doesn't work. And in fact, in 2019, I was told I couldn't be a member of the Historical Society. That's my return check. Because I was told that anybody who wants to keep the Historical Society on about preservation isn't welcome. And in fact, that's the point at which the Historical Society said they didn't care about preservation. So there's nobody now that actually cares about historic buildings. And that's important. Because up until the 1990s, Lethrop and Birmingham were the two leaders in terms of property values. Beverly Hills, Brigham Farms, Berkeley Royal Oak, they didn't keep pace. And when my mom went back to finish her degree in 1960 at Wayne, they actually used to refer to Lethrop as the growth point of the West. But I keep very close tabs on what's going on with property values now because, you see, my mother died defending her right to stay in Lethrop. My good brother died as collateral damage, and I had to sell my house and everything I owned to support her. And that's because my other brother and his wife, who happens to be a judge on the circuit court, and my brother was past president of the Yelena County Bar Association, said that Lethrop wasn't a good place to be in for all the kind of things that we're now complaining about. So the reality is I watch property values very carefully, week by week. And I can tell you now, smaller houses in Beverly Hills are selling more than bigger houses here in Lethrop. And a great deal of that has to do with the trashing of the business district. I have a friend just came back, she lives in Birmingham, came back through Lethrop a week ago from the airport. And she was shocked at what she had seen. She said Lethrop used to be a beautiful cultured area, used to have wonderful businesses and shops. Now it looks like a working-class strip mall. Well, if you're going to continue to create a working-class strip mall, if you're saying this council and this planning committee do not have the same skills that people in Berkeley do, for example, that you couldn't have brought these kind of appropriate businesses in, which is the kind of businesses that the original Historical Society members wanted brought in and repurposing these buildings, then I say I pity the people of Lethrop because it's going to be a continual spiral downward. I've now heard about the horror story you're looking to inflict on 12 Mile Road. And in the process, that will basically utterly degrade the value of the homes on Roseland. It is absolutely disgusting that we have a council that believes in a two-tiered citizenry. Property values go down, you don't have the same quiet amenity unless you live tucked away in the inside. There's no excuse for this kind of malfeasance. There is no excuse for this kind of poor planning.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Hearing none, we'll close the public comment section. Was there any old business or table items?
None at this time.
We'll move on to new business. Item A, the 28317 Southfield Road Site Plan Review.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. For those of you who don't know, my name's Eric Peach with Giffords Webster, the city's planning consultant. Our item up for consideration is for a proposed reuse of an existing tenant space at 28317 Southfield Road. What's proposed is a golf simulator business, which, when reviewing against the ordinance, is a permitted use by right. And so, based on our analysis, we were able to determine that the proposed use, that again being the golf simulator, has a slightly higher impact for parking. And so when doing the parking analysis, it was determined that the proposed use requires two additional parking spaces than the use that was there before. And if you refer to the letter in your packet, you can see where there's the breakdown of the different tenant spaces that are within the building and what the overall outcome is of the parking requirement. And so ultimately, the overall site is about five spaces short. So with that being said, the planning commission, according to the ordinance, has the ability to consider a reduction in parking within the Village Center and the mixed-use zoning districts, which this is part of, a percentage reduction of up to 25% of the overall parking requirement. So that amounts to approximately nine spaces, whether or not the applicant feels that that's a requirement, or if fewer spaces are sufficient. Again, there's short five spaces. So the planning commission should consider a reduction of between five and a maximum of nine spaces. That amounts to the 25%. So with that being said, the applicant did turn around quite quickly, which was appreciated on their part, to present a letter, which is also included in your packet, that states the reasons why they feel that the the reduction in parking is appropriate if the planning commission were to consider a reduction. So one other little comment I wanted to make in terms of my observation when reviewing the plans and visiting the site is that there appears to be a dumpster enclosure within the public alley. It's an existing condition. Nothing is changing with this new tenant. But it is, it is just an observation that it may be more or less of an existing nonconformity, or there may be an agreement with the city that allows for that use. But again, it's more or less just an observation as nothing's changing with the waste disposal on the property. So I believe, is the applicant here? The applicant's here to discuss the project and can answer any detailed questions about the parking requirements. The way that it's laid out in the letter is that there's a comparison between the hours of operation and then the times that there's the highest use. And so they can answer any questions, or I'd be happy to answer questions based on my review as well.
I'd like to ask a question. The chart that they gave of addressing the issue of complementary uses at different times of the same parking spaces by the different businesses, did you evaluate that? And do you have anything to say about their claim that these uses harmonize the different loads at different times?
Right. So if the information that was provided within the letter from the applicant is accurate, then I would tend to agree that they did an analysis for when existing businesses are open and when they're closed. And they did a good job articulating when there's overlap. And so one of the things that they can discuss with you as well is how this facility would be a by appointment only. So that would restrict the amount of parking spaces in demand from the proposed use, which I think can factor into the times that they've determined that there would be available spaces when other businesses within the, within the complex are closed.
I have a follow-up question to that.
Yes, sir.
Let me say first, thank you for submitting your site plan. I like the idea. I like businesses that are quiet. I like businesses that don't stink. I like businesses that don't have drunk people piling out of them. And I think it sounds fun and new and interesting. So as a general principle, I'm very high on your business. And thank you for delivering it to us. My primary concern, like what's already been discussed, is the parking situation. I did appreciate your analysis, and I was more or less convinced of it. But I was curious to know, how did you determine the peak hours for the bartending school and the insurance agency? Was there dialogue with the owners of those businesses to understand where their hours peak? Or is that just an assumption based on your feelings about how those businesses might operate?
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Lante Takona, and I am the owner of Mara Green's Golf Simulator. This is my brother, Sala Takona, and he is my business partner. To address your concern or your, yeah, concern on how we evaluated and found out the peak hours, part of it has been our time study. So we've been going there every day for the past two and a half months or so to kind of understand what the parking situation was, meet the individuals who own those businesses, and kind of start to understand their peak hours. So a standard engineering time study. From speaking with, there's three, there are three adjacent businesses to Mara Green's Golf Simulator. One of which is an insurance company. About two employees are in there, and of course, you have folks coming in and out of it every now and then. The second one is a medical supply business, which doesn't have a lot of foot traffic coming in. But again, when folks do business, they come in the park and leave. That one is closed on the weekends. And then the bartending school is the one that mostly has a lot of the customers, about seven students per se at a time. And typically, they come in the after 4:00 PM, after-work hours, to get their certifications and to take their courses. So it's been observation, speaking with the individuals, and then our own analysis as well.
Have you consulted with the property owner at all about their feelings on your proposal for the parking situation? I ask this because one of the existing businesses may cease to exist a year or two from now. And the property owner may need to seek a new tenant to occupy the then-vacated space. And that might present a problem for whichever new tenant might want to enter a vacated space should it occur. Have you consulted with the property owner about this at all?
We have actually talked to him about this exact thing. And to your point, the bartending school, not to speak on their behalf, is potentially going to be exiting the facility. And so he hasn't talked about, you know, what businesses he might welcome to come in. And obviously, we don't know what the parking situation would be there. But he has let us know that, he almost pitched us the next store over to say we'd like to, you know, rent that one too. In a year or two, we might weevil to. But overall, he's on board. He's also excited about it. And hasn't said any, hasn't mentioned any issues or concerns with the current parking scenario.
I'd like to follow up on the issue of the dumpster. Apparently, that isn't supposed to be there. Was that your report?
Not necessarily. It was just to make an observation to state that that's where the required waste facility is located on the site. It's, the ordinance states that it must remain free and clear of obstructing any alleyways or rights of way. And so by being located in the alley, technically speaking, it does not comply with that standard in the ordinance. So that raises the question whether or not there's an agreement from the property owner with the city that allows for the location of the dumpster enclosure there. But otherwise, if there's no issue with it, then it's just recognized as a non-conforming placement of the structure.
This might be an opportunity to put a little pressure for improvement in that, if that is a concern to the city and residents. I know that we're not to get into operational detail, but this is perhaps not ever come up before, and it's up in public now.
And a follow-up to that. That dumpster was located there when that building got rebuilt, remodeled, when it was re-done.
Renovated.
Long time ago. So the question really would be is, when the building was being renovated at that time, they probably had that dumpster right there in the beginning. So, I mean, we might need to have to go back in the past. Because that dumpster was there when they renovated this. And if they were following the same guidelines that we follow, they had to say what they were going to do to that dumpster to the commission at that time. So I'm not sure it's nonconforming. It might have already been agreed that that's where it's supposed to be.
Right. And that was another part of the observation, is that there already may be an agreement with the city that allows for it to be in that location.
Because this, I remember when this was redone.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, that's pretty much the only place you could put the dumpster also. But that's neither here nor there. I guess the question's for the applicant. Have you had any conversation with the business owner right next door to the, where you're going to be located? Looks like a small office building. It's like right there.
No, sir. We have not met the neighbor.
Only reason I'm asking is because the person that's in that building is just one person, one car, and they've got parking in the back. It might be possible to have an agreement, because part of what you can do is get a, an agreement to utilize their parking if you need overflow, or if you need to. So there's a possibility. I'm not saying that, I don't know the person, but I know that there's only one person there. When they bought it and repainted it and tore the tree down, cut the tree down, it's just one, one vehicle all the time. Just like if you cross over Wilshire, that office building is there. There's only three people in that building, and they've got probably eight or nine extra parking spaces. So something you might want to consider is a, I forgot what it's called. Shared parking agreement, which might be able to address your lack of additional space that you need. I'm sorry. That was the only question I had.
I have two additional questions, which I think are quick. The first is probably best for you, Austin, perhaps not. I noted that your operating hours extend to 10:30, and I'm simply curious if that is okay by way of all the rules in place.
The ordinance states that businesses can stay open till 11:00.
Okay. I guess my last point is not really a question, but something to be mindful of. Your paperwork mentions a consideration for potential and future signage. I would just remind you to be mindful of the many rules in place that the city has for things like monument signs. I would hate for you to get too far down the line in any project, only to learn that whatever you were planning may not be up to snuff. So I know that there is nothing beyond what's been considered, but I would encourage you to make sure your ducks are in a row before you get too far down the line.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
And we can, similar to the preliminary meeting we had for the site plan, we get to have a preliminary meeting for the sign application to make sure that everything is within our signers ordinance.
Okay. Yes, sign permit.
I have a general question about procedure, Les. I think this might be best for you. Whatever this commission decides, should we decide something, it advances to council to ultimately make a decision. Am I right?
Not related to the site plan.
Not related to a site plan?
No.
Okay.
We, the Planning Commission approves site plans.
Okay. Thank you.
I do have one question that is really just me. Is it a, is it all digital simulators, or is it the, I want to call it the big, the big wall where you hit the ball towards the wall? I can't think what it's called.
Yes.
Or is it digital? I mean, is it, you know, it's basically?
Yes, it's not just the digital piece. You will bring, like, your set of golf clubs. You will be hitting the ball.
So you hit to this, to the little?
Yeah. And all the sensors will read it and tell you what.
Gotcha. Okay. At least I know what it is now. We kept saying simulator. I was thinking, is this, do I just, am I hitting like a digital ball, but I'm hitting a real ball, but I'm just hitting up against a? It's like a, it's like a?
Like a projector monitor.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Projector screen.
I'm sorry.
Is there, we have a member of the council here and representative of the city. So these discretionary issues, like the dumpster issue, do we need to formally refer that to the city? Or just assume that you guys are going to address that?
I can follow up on the plan, site plan, the site plan that was approved at the time of the renovation of the building and see what it stated, and make sure everything was complied with as approved by the planning commission.
At that time?
At that time.
You will do that?
Yes. And if there is anything that needs to be changed or has not been complied with, I can follow up with the owner of the property.
Eric?
Yes.
Anything else?
Nope. Thank you.
Anything else from the applicant? Any other tidbits or?
No, sir. I just wanted to say thanks again for the Planning Commission's time and consideration for this project. And we do believe that with your support, Mara Greens can thrive and become a valuable part of this community, offering wholesome recreational fund to the residents and potentially inviting or inspiring others from neighboring towns to come and see what Lethrop Village has to offer.
Nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now I'm going to feel bad because I did have one more question. Hold on. She can stay right there. As you are fully aware, they're putting the same golf right at 13 Mile?
In the former Bed Bath &amp; Beyond?
Yeah, right in Beverly Hills. They're putting the same thing, pretty much. You're already aware of that.
Yes, sir.
It's the same thing, basically, just on a smaller scale, without, without the pickleball part.
Absolutely. And one thing that, for, for purpose of the parking, is that we will be moving to a reservation-only model. So we would have folks actually register for their tee times. We'd offer slots. We'd know when they're coming and when they're exiting. So slightly different. I think they might.
Yeah, there's a walk-in, I know. Just checking. That was okay. I just, I just saw that state. Okay. Well, if there are no more questions from the commissioners, we have two things basically in front of us that we have to address as a commission. Obviously, the first one is the fact that there are five parking spots.
Sure.
Understanding that the 25% rule is there, which we've used before to assist with parking. So we need to address that as a commission if we need to, want to discuss that before. Because the second thing is, we have to either approve or deny, or approve with some type of something regarding the site plan, or not approve the site plan. So my question to the commission is, one, we are aware of the fact that there are five parking spots short. Do we want to use our ability of the 25% to supplement the five parking spots? And then that resolves that issue? Or do we want to come up with some other requirement or something else as we discuss that? I'm sorry. I keep moving. It's hard looking back and forth, so.
I'll speak first. For those who haven't read it, it is available on the city's website, the letter they produced to explain their position on why it might be okay to have this parking waiver. And I agree that the letter is thoughtful, and it is detailed, and it is frankly convincing. So I appreciate that. My concern is that I think it's thoughtful and convincing a bit in a vacuum. And I know that you've done your due diligence to have kind of casual observation and casual conversation with the individual business owners and also perhaps the property owner. I would like to see perhaps more formal testimony from those folks attesting that they are okay with it. I feel like I would be inclined to be okay. folks attesting that they are okay with it. I feel like I would be inclined to be okay with it in general, except of course if the other tenants and the property owner feel differently than I might. So I wish there were more there to substantiate how other affected parties might feel about this parking waiver you've requested.
Is there a time pressure on this? I understand any business likes to get going once it has a plan, but I mean, is there any damage that will be caused by asking for it to be brought back with more information?
Well, we can either not approve it and say, come back with more information, or we can either approve it with a caveat that says, we want the support from the various businesses. I'm more inclined to say it's, to, if you're going to, if you're not, if it's just the parking and there's nothing else wrong, then have them come back with the support as you request it. Because part of that support could also be a shared parking agreement, which would resolve the issue completely.
Yeah.
And then that would give them the ability to do everything else they need to get done, knowing that they have to resolve the five parking spots.
What's your timeline? What, when were you looking at opening?
Based on what the city has for us due process. So we are fully inclined to follow whatever timeline that you might dictate. Obviously, you know, as soon as possible.
But when, yeah. How long would it take you to get it?
Like to open in February.
February? Okay.
Because there's still renovations that have to be done in the building.
Slight ones.
Yeah. I mean, based on the plan.
Yeah.
Well, perhaps you could suggest the wording for what you have in mind.
Oh, I thought you were still talking.
Looking to Mr. Hillman.
No, who I see. I was right.
I tend to share your opinion, which is, I would like to see testament, testimony from the property owner as well as the other tenants as to their feelings about this parking waiver. My primary concern is what undue harm this commission might impose on them by not properly considering their inputs.
Outside of that, are we all in agreement with everything else that relates to this site plan enough?
Yeah.
Enthusiastically, yes.
So, so we would, I'm sorry.
No, I just think that we need, on our side, we've had inconsistency in our meetings. That could then impact them. So I think if we're going to say that, if we're going to say, you need to bring back things, then we need to have our regular meetings and not wait until February to have our next meeting or January because that'll throw things off.
I know for a fact, there's a meeting in December and January.
Well, that's on the books.
No, no, no. I know, I know, I know for a true fact.
Okay. I, I, I believe you.
There's, there, there are, there are items that will be on the agenda for, that are already current on the agenda for December and January. So we can give them a date.
My other wish came true?
Your other wish came true.
Thank you.
Is there time, Eric, to, if they were to get that information relatively soon, that they could get on the December agenda?
Oh, yes. Yeah. There's no notification. So it would just be when the information's available, then we can establish them for the December agenda.
And if you agree as well, just for your input, I don't know if you were considering doing, like you had mentioned, an approval conditioned upon bringing it back, but I, I don't think, I think the right way to go about it would just be to wait because that's part of, that's an integral part. You can't really approve it, but then if they don't get this, what are you going to do? You can't really back out of your approval if the parking isn't going to work. So just hold off on the final. I think you all have discussed and you have a good idea of what you will do, but to formally hold off on, we could just table this subject to them providing this information that you wanted and maybe getting the, maybe seeking the shared parking agreement or looking to see if that would be a possibility and bringing that back and, or also getting, I don't know, would letters suffice or you from the?
I think what you're looking for is basically letters that, from the tenant and the landlord that agree with their, their study.
I agree.
So basically, they're sharing their study and they're providing the written documentation that they agree with it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you don't, so that, that'll be sufficient and if the co-tenants can't physically appear? I mean, of course, if they're willing to, that would be nice too, if they would want to come and give their opinion, you know, regarding your plan.
But he asked for something written.
But, yeah. So written.
So something written would, something written that says they agree with your parking study. And if you, if you have the opportunity to just put yourself over the top with parking and you have a shared parking agreement, it just resolves it even as much.
Absolutely. I understand. Thank you very much.
So we're going to table this in agreement, to table this item until the December, the December meeting. And in that way, it'll be back, you'll be back by December? You'll get on them by December?
Absolutely.
Need your timetable?
Any motion on that?
Yes. Then move the table, this site plan approval, the great, this site plan review for approval or denial until the December meeting that the applicant will bring back support regarding their parking study.
Second?
Move to second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Hearing none. See you in December.
Thank you.
Item B under new business was rezoning of 12 Mile. I'm assuming that you, I don't know which one to point to.
So right now on 12 Mile, which is the northern border of the city with Southfield, the parcels are zoned, two classifications. One is commercial vehicular district, which is to provide automobile-oriented commercial uses that typically create higher trip generation. And those are found at the intersection of Southfield and 12 Mile. They're the first two parcels to the south and one parcel to the west and then four to the east. And if going beyond, going east and west, the rest of the parcels are zoned office district, which is designed to promote sites for professional office uses and activities. North of 12 Mile is Southfield's overlay district for mixed use. So they have permitted commercial and residential uses on the north side and along the east and west. So there's this gap on 12 Mile where it is office while the rest of 12 Mile in the Southfield, on the other side of the Southfield boundary, is, has a mixed use overlay district. So you will find residential and commercial on 12 Mile on, on, in Southfield. Right now, speaking with property owners and developers, the demand for professional office space is not as high as it once was. The office buildings there along 12 Mile has mixed occupancy. And we are coming to you to talk about setting a public hearing to discuss rezoning to mixed use, which would bring in a larger pool of investors and developers who would be interested in renovating those buildings and renovating those parcels because of the additional uses by right. So we'd like to have a public hearing scheduled for next month to hear the rezoning to mixed use. We currently do have a mixed use classification here in our Main Street DDA district. It is specifically for Southfield Road in the Village Center. So it may be the expansion of that district along 12 Mile to correspond with our neighboring community of Southfield, or it may be a new mixed use classification specific for 12 Mile.
Question. I'm trying to visualize just a bit. Bear with me. Southfield 12 Mile on the Lathrop side. We've got the gas station vehicular.
Yep.
We've got the strip with Ogas vehicular. We've got the bank vehicular or a little strip. I'm counting that all as one.
Okay.
The Oga and the strip is all one place. Then it's the bank, which is vehicular. I'm assuming because it's got a drive-through. And you cross the street, you've got one house and then one building left and then we're out of Lathrop, right?
Are you going, oh, for going east?
I'm going east.
Yes. Yeah. There are, it looks to be, because there's Lathrop Boulevard and then there's three parcels and then you're out of Lathrop.
There's three?
Yep.
So there's two, two like office buildings, two little small office buildings? And then, then we're out of Lathrop?
Then you're out of Lathrop. Yeah. Then you're back in the, you're.
Then you're back in Southfield.
Yep.
Okay. When you come west, we've got BP and then we've got what I'm going to call the dentist's office because that's a big sign you see. Parking lot and then another office building. And then you've got the school, basically.
Yeah. And you got our DPW yard over there as well.
Not that far down.
Not that far down.
We, we've only made it to Guy. And then once you cross Guy, then we got like office building, office building, office building. Then we got the doctor's office. And then we're at Bloomfield. Then we got the attorney's office. Then we've got the physical rehab place. I'm sorry. The dentist, then the physical rehab place. Then we're getting close to DPW. So we're talking about basically that strip because there's not much to do on the, on the east side.
No. Yeah. Going east, there are, it's about 50/50 mix between commercial vehicular and office district.
I mean, because there's not a lot of space.
Because there's just not many parcels going east.
So when you come back going west, you're talking about changing the zoning basically from the gas station going basically to DPW?
Yeah.
Is, do we have a, has there been a quote, project in mind? Or is this still all quote hypothetical?
This is.
I'm not trying to keep up with Southfield. I'm not against, I know what they're doing, but they have more space.
Yes, they do. So right now, I had, there's no project that is currently in the, in the site plan review process or preliminary site plan review, but there have been a couple property owners who have discussed with me about what they can do beyond office and what they can do within the current zoning ordinance that they could do in addition to just professional office use. And right now their hands are tied because the only uses that they are permitted by right is professional office. So they.
So this is really coming from the vis- the property owners?
Yes. They, they, there was, since I've joined the city, there's been a couple who've approached me discussing that, about what additionally they could do with staying within the zoning ordinance. But as I said, their hands are tied because it's very specific that it's only for professional offices. And that kind of ties their hands to if they want to invest in their property, they're going to have to have it to be, they need those professionals to come to occupy that office space. But if we open it up to more uses by right, then we'd have a larger pool of investors who may be interested in coming into the city and developing those areas and improving on those buildings and also prying, bringing in a larger variety of potential commercial uses.
So we are talking about the possible rezoning for mixed use is really more commercial, still commercial use, not necessarily residential use?
It would be both. It would be both residential and commercial.
Wow. Still seem like enough space.
They do have quite large parking lots.
No, I, I know it well. Well, they have really good parking behind them.
Yes.
Yeah. They've got, because it abuts the brick wall right back there. Yeah.
Yeah. The barrier wall. Yeah.
I'm, I'm trying to figure out what kind of, I work a lot in Southwest Detroit and I know that it's a very traditional community and the business peoples, the business association said there was a lot of demand for the old fashioned housing above storefronts. So I'm familiar with that demand. It sounds like that would fit, but I just can't imagine it there. Then I can understand, I mean, would, would fast food places and liquor stores be acceptable in this revised plan?
See, that's part of the classification that would be reviewed because right now there is a mixed use currently in the ordinance, but it's specific to the Village Center in Southfield. So that is something, if we were to create a new mixed use, could call it a mixed use overlay district, that would have its own permitted uses and those that would require special land use that would then require coming here and getting approval for that type of use. But yeah, that, this would be the time to discuss the type of uses that we want permitted in that.
What kind of residential development would take place there?
It would probably be attached. It would probably not be any single family home.
It could be townhouses.
It could be. Yes.
It would probably look like, based on the space, if you've ever driven down 12 Mile, once you go into Berkeley, there's a, they built these look like brownstones right on 12 Mile. That, that's about the best you could do in that amount of space.
I drive every day down Southfield into Birmingham and right after 14 Mile, there's a beautiful block, a beautiful row of, I think, back there behind all those, the great landscaping out front is a berm that kind of blocks, blocks off the view and a very colorful landscaping on top of it. And it's really the most attractive part of my route from here to Birmingham. And it does appear to be a row of townhouses behind it. I think we need more of that kind of housing in the community. We have to jump from fairly expansive, single-family homes and large lots to, then we're talking next, we're talking all of a sudden about apartments, rental apartments. And I really think this middle level of housing of rural houses or townhouses are, would be very appropriate and very appropriate tapering down to the, to the business strip. But on the other hand, I, I think the public would want to know that we're not going to be bringing in more fast food places or anything of that nature. So we would have to have more information of that. I'm not so well acquainted with that side. But when I do my bike ride, it's usually up Southfield or Lathrop and then turn right. And the first thing I notice after the bank is this area kind of, I don't want to use words that will seem too negative here, but it just seems poorly developed. And you have a couple of starter houses in with maybe a business label on them. It looks very poorly developed. I think we're really getting into Southfield maybe in my imagination there. But I can see that something's not quite right about that zoning there. I would have to have more information on what, what this mixed use would bring.
Basically, you were, I'm sorry. I just talked over you.
No.
Basically, you were saying we would write, we would have to develop that.
It would be.
I mean, because the one is specific only for the downtown.
Yeah. Currently, the one is specific to the downtown. So this would be a second mixed use classification that would be specific for 12 Mile.
Right.
And that's, and what we were hoping to achieve tonight was kind of get your, all of your feel for it. Is this something that you'd be willing to entertain and discuss? If we did draft a new zoning classification for that part of the city and for those parcels, would you be open to considering it? Or would it be something that you would kind of shoot down right away?
Personally, I, I would be open to, to seeing it, just depending on how it's written.
Okay.
I mean, because of issues like fast food and some other things. If it's written specifically that these are the kinds of things organizations, businesses or whatever, they can go in there. I'm certainly willing to look at it.
Okay. And that's what I'm hoping to kind of get from all of you tonight is, what is it that you would like to see in it? And what is it that you would, would like to stay away from in the new zoning classification?
To your point about the Southfield side of 12 Mile Road, west of Southfield Road, I'm picking up what you're putting down. I'm picking up what you're putting down about the variance between the two sides and how they're zoned. However, I will point out, and I believe Les already has, that the Lathrop. Side of it extends much further west than the Southfield side of it. Eventually in Southfield, you hit the backs of residents as much sooner than you do on the Lathrop Village side. So we're talking about a much longer stretch of road in Lathrop than we are in Southfield. Um, and frankly, Twelve Mile Road, west of the intersection is a quiet place. Quiet, dark, uh calm place. Uh, and I would imagine that a lot of residents might have strong feelings against it becoming something that wasn't quiet. That wasn't calm, that wasn't uh as peaceful as it currently is. So my initial feelings mirror some of my peers, which is a row of beautiful condominiums sounds great. A row of fast food restaurants sounds less great, so I think we would have to be very careful in the way we construct what that mixed. Uh, usage zone looks like.
In part of the um, the ordinance or the uh classification would say that there would be no driveways or drive-throughs permitted.
Yep.
And also with it being mixed use, that it would be both commercial and uh office and residential, that there would have to be harmony between the uses. So that be with people living there, you definitely would not wanna have um uses that would disrupt people's um. Sleep and their, their normal way of life.
Sure. I'm also speaking as somebody who lives on San Quentin, which is smack dab in the middle of the neighborhood. I'm certainly not a resident of a street like Roseland or Rosewood, Roseland. For whom a person's backyard very well might be this stretch of Twelve Mile Road. And I imagine those people will have stronger opinions than anybody about what happens in their backyard. Um, I'm happy to hear that. It sounds like the suggestion is simply to host a public forum to discuss the possibility of this as the next step.
It would be getting feedback from residents and from um, from the property owners themselves as well. It was, tonight was to see if this was something that you guys would be open to listening more to. And something that possibly would be something that we could get adopted over time, or is this something that um, there is no appetite for at this time?
I'm a working professional, I know very well that office space is becoming especially abundant. Because our culture in our world is just driving people out of those spaces and into their homes, frankly. Um, so whereas I don't wanna McDonald's along Twelve Mile Road, and I think I speak for most citizens of Lathrop Village when I say that. Um, I also don't want a row of empty office buildings along Southfield Road, that's no good either. So I'm certainly not opposed, I just believe that this commission and the city government should. Take very careful tiptoes in the direction of a change, and I think a public hearing is a perfectly appropriate first step. Um, the only caveat I would make to that is about the residents along streets like Roseland. I do believe that the city has an obligation to uh directly engage uh residents who are. Who live most proximal to areas that would experience these changes. Because the last thing I want is for a resident along Roseland or Bloomfield or whatever other. Street might be uh very close to a section of change, to feel like they were left out of the loop on something that. Uh, may make a big difference in their life.
And part of the public hearing process is also notifying those residents that there is a proposed change. And giving them advance notice of when the public hearing will take place. And that they are welcome to provide feedback either in person or provide um feedback to the city clerk. That is then passed along to city staff, so they definitely will be notified uh in advance. And then also any feedback would be taken into consideration when drafting the uh zoning classification language.
What was the process for you? You, you would draft something, we would look at it? Say it looks okay to us and then at the next thing we would have a.
Schedule a public hearing.
Public hearing, okay.
I've been uh trying to catch up with the work, since this is my first meeting. Um, I was reading through the, the plan, the. What, what do you call the whole plan?
Messerly.
Uh, today and uh I noticed that uh the kind of housing that we are lacking is um. Housing for seniors and, and young couples who don't wanna get into or be in the landscaping business anymore. Do you wanna stay in the community or wanna put holes in, in a community like this? Um, without in, investing in lawn equipment and all the rest that goes with that. And uh, I think uh, as we move in that direction and we, if not this. Spot, there are other spots where that might come up as well, uh we wanna think about. Not cheap housing, but value housing. People may not want to invest in six hundred thousand dollar ranch home. But I think the young technicals that we would like to attract and the seniors that would like to. Move into that kind of housing. We want quality housing and uh. Housing that's affordable to operate. Uh, I noticed in Detroit, a lot of cheap housing is unaffordable. Because it has a, the wrong level of insulation of uh heating and. Appliances and so on, we would want the very best. So that even at that level, it would be step up housing, it wouldn't be cheap town housing. It would be affordable, but, but quality. And a quality that uh knowledgeable people would, would respect. And would, would then attract that kind of resident to reinforce the fabric, social fabric of the community.
I think that's a great point with um the quality of the, the home itself and also the um. The uh missing middle housing that currently uh the entire state is missing. The governor recently put a report out that uh we're short fifty five thousand housing units. And um, that missing middle housing, it needs to be a variety, like you said, townhomes or above commercial. Those are, that's kind of what um many people are looking for and like you said, for younger people, they're not looking to uh buy and invest in a bunch of. Lawn equipment, they wanna just be able to come, pay an HOA and, and carry on and then um. Older residents uh who are downsizing also don't wanna take on that responsibility, they wanna be able to uh enjoy other aspects of life.
Question.
Yes.
First, I guess since I know the property, since I live on Roseland. This is coming from the property owners, most of it, the, the idea of being able to have more options.
Yes.
Okay, since we don't own the property.
We have no interest in any of the properties.
In the city owns the property.
No, not, no, not that I'm aware of.
So if they, as a property owner, we have to understand that. You know, we can either try to work with them or they can sit there and leave it vacant, like we've got other things that have been sitting vacant, okay. So I guess my question is, is as we discuss this, do they have something or have they taken the time to put something together? Because once you still have people that you wanna talk about it, most people are visual. So they're gonna say, what's it gonna look like, what, what are you considering, what are you not considering? Which is a lot easier to discuss than just simply saying we wanna do a mixed use overlay. Because if you're not familiar with what quote a mixed use overlay is, then, then you get, what is it gonna be McDonald's? Is it gonna be Happy's, is it gonna be a strip? But if the property owners are serious, I would say to take a few minutes and put together a. Conceptual idea, uh so that people can see what you're talking about. It's one thing to say you wanna put, you know, what they call them brownstones along Twelve Mile. We could say it and it might look really nice, once we see it. Or we could say, we're talking about putting brownstones up, I get the visual of Ber- or Berkeley and then I go, God, this is gonna look really bad. Cause it's a brownstone right next to Jet's Pizza or something. But if I could see it, or at least, you know, not like a site plan, but just a, a conceptual drawing of. This is how we could see, we could actually change this area. Because there are businesses there that have been there a very long time, don't look like they're trying to go anywhere. But if the economics makes sense, they would be willing to, you know, change, tear the building down and put up something else that makes more money. But it would be helpful, I think, for the residents to be able to see. What that concept would look like.
Okay.
Uh, so I'm not saying that I'm against, you know, having a public hearing and having people discuss it. But I think before we say we're gonna schedule a public hearing, we might wanna say to the owners, can you give us something that. When the people come to talk about it, they're looking at something.
Okay, yeah, we can definitely reach out, talk with them and see um what concepts or potential they were, they had in mind. And we can draft uh language that, potential language that could be used and then also have some. Visuals to conceptualize what could be on Twelve Mile.
Because the guy, uh, I met the man that owns um, that owns the, the Indus, this, the school. And may, I don't, I'm just making, I'm just saying, he, he might have in his mind, you know, Indus would be better if I could spread it out. So maybe it's not that he, he just wants to have more space, instead of having this dated office building, he wants to be updated and have more amenities. Well, that would be something that would have to be in the mixed use, because he's doing more than just having a school. But now we have a way to visually see a concept of what he's discussing. I'm just using him as an example, I'm not saying he's trying to do anything. But as an example, even uh the gentleman owns a church. He might say, you know, it would be great if I could have these extra amenities, this is what I'm thinking about on Twelve Mile. And now people have something they can look at. And when you can look at it, you can discuss it a lot easier than just conceptually trying to visualize it in your head.
No, I think that's great feedback and that's, this is what I was looking for, is to have um each of you to put input into what. Information you're looking for, but then also uh what type of uses you would like to see there and also what uses. You would prefer we do not have on Twelve Mile Road.
Yeah. I'd like to second some of uh your sentiments, Les. I think it's easy and it's probably human nature to presume the worst and to fear that whatever replaces the existing. Will be worse than what was there before. Though perhaps some visuals and perhaps some more thoughtfulness beyond just a vague discussion about what could be. Might actually turn people on to the idea and allow them to see that a beautiful row of townhomes like you described or. Some other thing that we may not have even thought of at this table, um might feel inspiring and not like a compromise at all. So uh, very happy to take tiptoes in that direction.
Okay, and that was kind of um the mindset was that you said concepts that we aren't even thinking or discussing about right now. And having um additional uses by right would bring in um more investors who do these type of projects. And they may bring in concepts that, you know, we don't even think of during this process.
Yeah.
So, cause right now it's, it's just office, so it's just those who invest and develop um office space. So this would bring in um uh investors from around the region who would bring in different concepts, different ideas. And also are experienced with these similar um corridors.
Yeah, and they probably already have some quote examples that would make it easier to discuss.
Okay.
Just throwing it out there, I'm curious, what do you think about work-live accommodations? Is that something you eke?
I'm not quite.
Open to, so where there's a business on the, like a lower level and then you can live, also have your residence above it. I know there's some of those, that's just another option.
I do know, I know professionally, that those business, those, those storefronts underneath are very difficult. Those businesses underneath residential are very difficult to fill. Uh, a lot of them go, they're just sitting, uh, you just don't have a lot of use for it. I mean. Too many people work from home, you know, I mean, I, 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 I've seen it, I mean, I've seen where they built it up and you've got. Like office space underneath and then residential above. Keep saying the same thing, it looks great, man, but I can't get the office space built. I just can't, can't get it leased. And then uh, you know, I, it was funny, cause we were talking about something else, about residential with stores underneath. I just went through Royal Oak uh today and all of the buildings, all the uh apartments that they built with the storefronts. They've now covered them all, all the windows are closed and painted to match the rest of the building, they're, they're not even trying to lease them out anymore. So I figure now they're probably trying to repurpose the inside to provide more tenant amenities.
This is anecdotal and a little bit tangential, but my previous residence before living in Lathrop Village was a condominium on Hilton Road in Ferndale. And I had a very strange living room at the first floor of my building, because it was intended for. A business and ultimately became something else that I watched TV in. It looked weird from the outside and it seemed weird from the inside, uh, but that's what they did, because. Whatever candle shop or bookstore that they thought might go there, surprise never came to fruition, so. It's a, but, to, to your point, that's that community. And I have spent lots of time in communities like Birmingham where there are beautiful rows of townhouses. With law agencies and insurance agencies and, and other businesses as such underneath, so. Who knows, um perhaps some of these uh, uh property owners already have tenants in mind that might make us feel differently. I've seen it both ways, I suppose.
That's what I always start with. Start with the people who own the business, they own the building, let them show us what they wanna do.
Okay.
At least we always have the right to say no. But they still own the building, I, I, I can't spend other people's money for them, so. If they come with a plan and this is what they're willing to spend money on, we can tweak it to make it work for us. But we're still spending their money, so. I would say, you know, maybe have that, continue that conversation with the property owners and see if they can give you some. Examples, see if they can come together with a plan of examples, so that when we do say, sure, let's have a public hearing, they'll be prepared. As well as uh the people coming to see it, they're gonna have a lot of questions, so they'll have at least more to show them, be more to discuss. And more concepts of what it could be, as opposed to, so it'll be easy to say, no, we're, before we start, no, it's not McDonald's, no, it's not KFC. No, it's not Burger King, and it's, then it's like, oh, okay, 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 we don't have to talk about that, this is what I'm talking about. They can say, this is, see, this is what we did before, this is what we're talking about. And at least now that, that starts the discussion a little bit better.
Okay.
At least from my perspective.
I appreciate the feedback and that's what we were, we're looking for tonight, is get uh all of your feel and then also um just get this conversation started. It's not gonna be something that happens very quickly, it's gonna be um a longer process and. Yeah, we gotta work with the property owners and also work with the residents to abut up to their, their property, abut up to these parcels.
And just if I may, one more thing about the notice requirements that you're concerned with that. It is a requirement for zoning change that the, in addition to the properties affected. Properties within three hundred feet of those have to be notified like by mail or personally, not just the publication. So there will be extra steps that would be taken to notify the affected residents that are close by.
As we move on to item eight, other matters for discussion. We have our development project update.
So. So currently there are um five projects that are in the PZE process. So um first one uh is uh, well, Les, I wanna ask you, in the past, how did my predecessors present this part?
It was pretty simple.
Was it?
What, the reason this is here is because the concern was, we get a lot of projects come through. We, we approve a site plan, I'm, I use this as an example. We approve a site plan, even though we didn't, I wasn't here, they approved a site plan for the gas station. But throughout the process of that project, there are other things that come up. But the commission does, all we know is that the project got approved, you never know, how far along is it, are they about to open? You know, is there something holding them up? Because, so when it, if something comes back, like using the gas station. When they found out that they needed a, a, a wall. And you know, they couldn't, they realized they couldn't put a cement wall, put the cement, the cement, they couldn't put a solid cement wall because of the footings. They brought it back, well, for those of us who weren't here, we, all we knew was, there's a gas station coming. Okay, but now when you come back, you say, well, this is where that project stands. Okay, it's because they're, they need a, a, they need to fix this wall issue because of the footings. And then we came up with this, the papers, that resolved the issue for them. And then, you know, you have a project say, oh, we had these pizzas coming, we got a Happy, this is where they are in development. Such and such is coming, this is where in development, Sarnos redoing the building, this is where they are. Put in the right direction. Building next door, uh they finally started development, because if we, if you don't tell us, all we know is that we approved the site plan. That's it. And then the next thing we see is, next thing, next question we get is, we approved the site plan, we're not going to start something.
So. I never said that.
So then what happens is, she would give, it would be an update. And we'll say, okay, you all approved the site plan on X day. They've already got all their building stuff in order, they're starting construction, this is where they are.
Okay.
Some things we can see, but usually that's all it was.
No, I, I think it's a great, great approach because it shows transparency. And then also kind of like lets the left hand know what the right hand's doing. Because like you said, you guys approve it, and then at that point, there's not an official update coming to you all. So I like, I, I definitely will do this on a monthly basis for you.
That's all it is.
Yeah.
And, and part of it helps us, helps some of us who are approached by residents. Okay, I don't live near the building next door here, but some of us do. So nobody in particular. But when someone comes up and says, hey, when is this going to happen? They actually will have the ability to say, well, the building's coming along, they got their approval, they're going to start construction, because it's not like it's a secret. But if we don't know, we're saying the same thing, yeah, we approved it, but I can't tell you what's happening.
Okay.
But now we can at least say, we know it's in this stage of, okay, the holdup is this. I could definitely use Panera as example. I know all about that. But I'm using something that's new. So the building next door was new. We approved it. So even I think the last time we met.
They hadn't really done anything.
We approved the site plan. We had never seen anything happen. So we're like, what happened? And my assumption was, you know, you still have to go through the process of the building side. But now, let's say three months later, we can see what's happening.
Yep.
So stuff like that.
Yeah, next door at 27300 Southfield, they have begun both exterior and interior work. So it has begun. The facade is coming along well. And at 27601, construction's completed and business has opened. And we're just waiting on them to install outdoor furniture and amenities as stated in the Plan U Development Agreement. So I am in communication with the property owner to get additional feedback from the tenant who has sent over proposed furniture and amenities. And then I gave them feedback, so I'm waiting to hear back from them on that property. At 27600, 28001, construction's completed, business license is issued, and the spa has opened. At 27411 Southfield, the rest have received their business license and it has opened as well.
Yeah. That, that's it.
All right, then this is what, I can do this for you on a monthly basis.
That's what it was about. Yeah, and we asked for it on a monthly basis to keep us updated. That was all.
And this is also something, talking with city hall staff, that we think will put up downstairs in the lobby. So this will always be up, that people can take a look at it when they'd like. And then if they want, they can always call me and we can discuss.
Appreciate it. So that was it? Item nine, general communication.
Yes, we have, we are beginning the communication with Michigan Economic Development Corporation about getting our redevelopment rate certification. Oh, first off, we have a new face on here on City Hall. Tom. So we've been talking about it for a while. We got, we have Tom, who is our new CED and DDA intern. Tom, if you'd like to step up and introduce yourself.
Hello, everyone. I'm the face in the corner. So my name's Tom. I'm a two-time graduate from Oakland University, most recently in this last April of 2024. I have a master's in public administration, an undergraduate in political science, and a minor degree in English studies. A lot of my research and my work during my MPA was in economic development, community development, housing development, things of that nature. So I, I applied for the position that Austin and the city had put out. And I believe I was one of four that was.
Yeah, we had nine applicants who were all high achievers, both graduate and undergraduate level. We interviewed four individuals. And Tom, we selected Tom, he was a candidate that stood out. And other item that really kind of stuck with us is that his parents both worked in municipal government. His mother was a clerk for 25 years, and his father was a firefighter for 30. So he wants to be, work in municipal government, and he wants to work in community economic development. So he, I think he's going to be a great fit, and he's going to fit in well with city hall staff and also be a good addition to the team.
No, he wasn't going to introduce you. Welcome.
Give me, give me more ammo. This is all I need.
But he does have a part of the redevelopment rate certification process with Michigan Economic Development Corporation is the education orientation of the planning commission.
Okay.
So these are, on these thumb drives are different documents that the city and the Michigan Municipal League and Michigan Planning Association have put together
Thank you.
that are best practices for serving on a planning commission. So we ask that you all please take a look at the information on the thumb drives. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to Tom and I. We will give, we can definitely provide additional information or put you in the direction to find trainings. There's some fantastic trainings with MSU Extension, with Michigan Planning Association, with the Michigan Economic Development Association. So, and as a part of us getting our redevelopment rate certification back in good standing, is this information being provided to you all? So please take a look at it, and we will follow up at a later date.
Thank you. Was there any other general communication from the commission? No, no. We welcome our new commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you as well. With that, we'll take a motion to adjourn. Oh, wait, wait, before we adjourn, we do have a meeting scheduled for in December. As we all are aware, we received a conceptual drawing from Sarnell. So I'm going to ask both the engineer and our, and Austin as well, if there's any other information related to the project that they can forward it prior to the meeting in December so that we'll have time to review it.
Yes, we will get all information to you in advance and enough time for you all to take a look and then also provide any questions if you have. Our next meeting is December 17th at 7:00 PM here in Council Chambers.
With that, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Remove the second on the favor.
Aye.
We are adjourned.